We are convening. Mr. Leahy, I think we got some satisfaction survey information.
Yes, very, very satisfactory, by the way. So I would like to introduce Jonathan Hobbs, our acting co-director of Budget and Management Services, and he will introduce our guests here to give the presentation on the citizen satisfaction survey.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Dyer, members of city councils, today we have with us Peter McGinnis and Loretta Alsop from Issues and Answers Network. Issues and Answers is a global research and consulting firm that's based right here in Virginia Beach. They recently completed our 2019 citizen satisfaction survey, and they are here today to present their findings to you. So, Loretta?
Welcome.
Thank you. Let me first say that it has been a pleasure to work on your study. I think most of you have perused through the report and/or the presentation and know that we're going to give you lots of happy news. And so I like to be the bearer of happy news. So let's get started. The agenda for this is background and objectives. I'll give you a little overview of our sampling and methodology, and some key findings, and then insights by zip code or rather district. Your citizen satisfaction survey has been going on since 1995, and this year we continue. And the goals of the study are to understand the perception of the quality of life right here in Virginia Beach, to quantify that satisfaction based on your services and your programs, to gauge the perceptions of the city's programs and services, to understand the use of the residents and their use of their city's resources, and determine the preferences for the information on your delivery systems. Methodology and sampling. First of all, we did conduct the survey with adults, and it was conducted through 1018 throughout 1110, so roughly three and a half weeks. We have 507 completed interviews, and the survey was consisted of listed landlines and smart cellphone records. So we had purchased 24,000 landline records and 15,300 cellphone records. So that was our pool. Sample size that we have is a gives us a 95% confidence level with a sampling error of 4.3%. And to correct for any sampling variation that we could have come across and to be able to project to the population, we did weight the data based on age, and only age. We set our quotas based on zip code, which pairs up to your districts', age and gender. And here are our findings, what we're waiting for. Traditionally, you have a high satisfaction across the residents for all of Virginia Beach, and once again, we see that this year. We have a 93% satisfaction level of all Virginia Beach residents. You'll see back in 19... I'm sorry, 2017. I'm not that old, right? And back in 2017, there was a 94%. But what's key here is notice that this region, 43%, are highly satisfied as compared to 2017 is 36% satisfied. So although the numbers look consistent, you're going to see that we have this intensity of people being more satisfied than before. It's very encouraging. That'll work? Like that? All right, individual services with the highest satisfaction ratings. These are 95% and above, 95% and above. First of all, is your fire department. And actually, that rounds up to 100% when, in all actuality, it is a 99.5%. But to be consistent with all of the rounding that does take place, it does represent right at 100%.
So if only 99.5%, we wouldn't have a reminder of that.
Yeah. There's always one. And in this case, there were actually two folks, two folks out of the entire survey that didn't rate it as extremely high. Pardon me? All right, so the public libraries, that's at a 98%. So that's very high, very high, very, very little room for anything there. Paramedics and rescue squad services are at 98%. And your rec centers at a 96 and parks at 95. These are very impressive numbers, very impressive numbers. Satisfaction cities, we'll just continue here. And these are at the 90% to 94% satisfied. So this consists of your museum and your aquarium and the cultural arts, horticulture and agricultural services, including your damn-deck road farmer's market. These are all, again, 90 to 94. This is really great. The 3-1-1 system where you can call with a question, the 9-1-1 telephone center, the overall appearance of the city, city's effort to utilize volunteer resources, police department services, emergency management services, and just the overall appearance of your neighborhoods.
I don't know if you want questions as you go along. But when you say it's driven by, do you mean that those were the areas that had the highest ratings of satisfaction?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Now, here are the areas where you have the lower satisfaction ratings. This means you have a satisfaction ratings of less than a 70%. We're looking at the flow of traffic in the city. And those are driven by your Kempstil and Indian River areas.
So that means that area had the lowest satisfaction?
Yes. Yes.
So Princess Anne has the lowest satisfaction as far as flooding?
Yes. So services for needy and the homeless, the lowest numbers would have been Chimney Hill and Northeast. Those are the drivers there.
But there's, it just means the lowest. It doesn't mean any particular level of lowness, so to speak.
Correct.
Hey, Jim?
Since we're asking the questions, I'll go ahead and ask on page six of your methodology and sampling in this one. And I've just, so I'm getting to this whole driven by thing. You list 23452, and you arbitrarily, in my opinion, picked a neighborhood Chimney Hill, which 23452 is significantly larger than just a reasonably small neighborhood Chimney Hill. So I'm wondering, when you say Chimney Hill, are you referring to that small neighborhood? Or are you referring to all of 23452?
All of 23452.
Okay. Because, again, Chimney Hill is a very, very small part of it, frankly, part of it's 23462, part of Chimney Hill is, so. So we're, so really, it's more fair to say that it's not driven by Kempstil and Indian River, but it's driven by those specific zip codes?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Service areas where residents will report the least contact, which would then garner a substantial proportion of the folks who would have answered "not sure" or who would have refused to answer a specific question. And those come in three areas, the city's 3-1-1 system. So these are people who have had little or no, have had no contact who refuse to answer the questions. City mental health and intellectual disability services, and city for the needy and homeless families. So again, these are not saying they are low. All we're saying here is that these are people who have had lower contact with the city service. So people in these areas were more likely to not answer questions. Overall, we'll see that the satisfaction ratings throughout the years pretty much have remained stable, and they're similar this year. What we observed, any changes that did exist, were pretty much positive. The rises in satisfaction from our 2017 survey on some of those mid-range areas and the lower-ranking areas come into the city's efforts to address reoccurring flooding and the effects of sea level. This year, it's at a 58%. This is 11% increase from the 2017 survey, which is pretty noteworthy. Planning and construction of new city roads, this year is at a 61%, which is a 6% increase over 2017. That's a significant number as well. Planning for residential development, this year you're at a 68% satisfaction, which is an increase of 10%. The opportunity for citizens to share their opinions before the city makes important decisions, that's at 70% this year, and that is a 7% increase over the 2017 survey. City's efforts to communicate and engage residents, that's at a 76%, which is a 6% increase. And one that's very interesting is your job opportunities in Virginia Beach, which is at an 81% satisfaction right now. And that is a 7% increase over 2017. 2017. Had a lot of good results here, but these are kind of key. Because look at what this is. These are where people are going from satisfied to very satisfied. Your fire department, libraries, paramedic and rescue squad, rec centers, parks, the telephone systems, horticulture and agricultural services, your overall appearances studies of the city, police department services, emergency management efforts. These are folks that went from satisfied to very satisfied. Appearance of the neighborhood courtesy of city employees, public beaches, trash collection and recycling, the drinking water, the school system. Your folks went from satisfied to very satisfied. Conditions of the streets in the neighborhood, and the city's effort to address those reoccurring flooding and effects of the sea level rise. So we've increased, you've increased quite a bit. Significant satisfaction drop that we have seen for 2017 is the city's work with other communities to address issues impacting the region. So this year, it's at a 72%, whereas in 2017, that was 6% higher, or 6% lower this year. So there's your drop. Everything else looks awesome. Here's usage of the city programs and services. More than eight in 10 residents have visited your city parks at 84% and public beaches at an 83%. Seven in 10, 70%, have visited the museums, aquarium, or attended a cultural activity. We have two-thirds have visited your public libraries or you've accessed them via the internet. Roughly six in 10 have been to the rec centers. And just over half have been able to contact the city by phone or internet or in person. That's half. So this is the use of your services. Information channels. The majority of your residents, at 91%, are using your online services. And this, we find on par with most areas. Those numbers are increasing year by year. 73% use your city website. So that's the preferred method. Other channel resource areas are 64% use TV and news, and 61% are using their friends and family to get their information. But resoundingly, the most used is your city website. Seven in 10 residents are at 72% believe that the available information about your city services is right on par with where it needs to be, right amount of level. And that's consistent with what we see in 2017 as well. So it's pretty stable. Perceptions, perceptions of the city. Over nine in 10 residents will agree that Virginia Peach, Virginia Beach, is a good place to live. Neighborhoods are a safe place to live. Again, that's in the 90 percentile and up. There is a 7% increase from 2007. Now, we'll talk about Virginia Beach overall, is a safe place to live. That's up 8% from 2017. People can feel that they can conveniently access all of your city services, and houses in their neighborhoods are very well-maintained. So those are all at 90% and above. More than seven in 10 agree. More than seven in 10 believe that their tax dollars are being used. Well, they're getting good value out of that. And more than seven in 10 agree that they feel comfortable about how to inform the city, about how you feel about, how they feel about important issues. This year, overall, residents are markedly more likely to agree that the city as a whole and their neighborhoods are safer places to live. Most of the overall perception scores do remain consistent with our 2017 survey. Positive attitudes, as I've said before, have intensified. So we've gone from that satisfied to very satisfied. Safety in the city overall and in the neighborhoods is most likely to receive the lowest scores from the oceanfront itself. And there'll be a breakdown in a few slides from now that'll show you those zip codes. Awareness that the city's plan, that the city's plan, that the city does have this comprehensive plan about the growth of the community and its priorities. Just under one-half of the city is aware of that. Segments who show a higher percentage of that are your residents aged 35-plus. That's at a 55%. Residents with at least a college degree are looking at 60%. And this is versus the 48%. Caucasian residents at a 54%, registered voters 51, and residents in those income from $100,000. This is one of the newer questions, so I don't have anything to compare it for, for you, for 2017. Support for including the referendum on the ballot. More than seven in 10 residents are in favor of having the referendum added on the ballot, which includes next year to support an additional tax to speed up projects addressing your neighborhoods. The highest among these groups are your female residents at 76%. Residents who are aged 18 to 34, so the younger group, is at a higher 80%. Also, at the other end of the spectrum, the older group at 65-plus, at 75%. Residents earning under $20,000 at 79%. And then those in the upper brackets, at the 150 to 175, are looking at 85%. So overall, we're looking at a scale here of a 3.3 out of, I'm sorry, a 2.3 out of a scale of four, which is indicating that including in the referendum on the ballot would be successful. Insights by zip code.
You just asked whether it should be on the ballot.
It should be on the ballot, yes. Just whether it should be on the ballot. We're not looking for opinions here or on, on the actual referendums. Overall satisfaction with living in Virginia Beach. You will see the, here, the oceanfront folks are the most satisfied at 98%. 98%, most satisfied with living in Virginia Beach. Now, that trails all the way down to Indian River at a 90%. So your lowest score is 90%. It's awesome.
Well, look, your problem here with Indian River is Indian River Road goes from Norfolk to Punggol. So when you say Indian River...
That's a big...
I'd like to point out that Bayside District has the highest percentage.
I was counting how long it was going to take me to say that.
So that's your overall satisfaction with living in Virginia Beach. Your overall appearance of your neighborhoods. We're looking here at interesting results. You have, starting at 93% for Bayside and Princess Anne. 93% satisfaction there. Down to your absolute lowest score here is right here, 88% at Chimney Hill. 88% is still really good. Got some happy folks here.
Little appearance of the neighborhood, Princess Anne in Bayside.
Condition of streets in your neighborhood. Okay, we had to put this in. Results is a result. So here, condition of the streets in the neighborhood, not as good. We're looking at a 74% at the lowest at the Northeast. So right in here, of course, 74% and Chimney Hill, so these regions. But overall, not terrible. Roads I use in Virginia Beach are generally too congested. So folks who are agreeing with this at the highest point, which is the 80% in Kempstil and in Indian River. Because, of course, if you're agreeing with that statement, that is negative. We want to see lower numbers there. 66% at Bayside have the least congestion issues.
I might add that through our 20-year history of doing these things for the city, Kempstil has always come up with traffic issues. It's the most densely populated area in Virginia. And that's why all that work is being done now. So I would expect when that's finished, I'll score.
Also, the area that has the least amount of employment, the most amount of residences, and requires therefore the most commuting to employment. If you look at it in terms of, it's mostly all residential, very little employment.
That explains a lot, too. My neighborhoods are a safe place to live. Neighborhoods, safe place to live. Northeast agrees with that statement at 99%. And your least lower level here, we're talking Indian River at a 92%. 92% is the lowest. Not bad. Pardon me? The oceanfront, oceanfront 90%. Yeah, oceanfront is at 90%. Virginia Beach, overall, is a safe place to live. Oceanfront's a little higher here at 92%. But we're looking at Lansdowne at 98, and then Kempstil and Indian River at 99.
Interesting.
So overall, the numbers are higher for Kempstil and Indian River there. Houses in my neighborhood are well-maintained. We're looking at Princess Anne at 100%. Princess Anne at 100%. And then we slide down to Bayside at 95. The lowest rating there is at Lansdowne at 79%.
That's not the oldest housing in the city by any stretch of the imagination.
Support for including the referendum question on the ballot. You can see this broken up by zip code here. So this is the support for including the question on the ballot. So we're looking at the lowest down here at 58% at the Northeast, the 84% in Lansdowne. Overall.
Any questions? Mr. Wood?
I have a couple, and I hate to keep harping on this, but the neighborhood references are just wrong on this. 23452, for example...
23452.
Chimney Hill is in 23462. I just typed in a bunch of addresses here and looked just to confirm.
Really?
Yes. 23452 has a diverse group of neighborhoods. Anything from Plaza Trail, which is represented by Mr. Berluci, to Thalia, to the Little Neck Peninsula, which is some of the higher, most highest-priced properties in the city. And that's concerning to me because it keeps referencing Chimney Hill, and Chimney Hill is not in 23452. 23459 and 23460 are only federal property. I'm assuming we did, you did not survey people on the military bases. Maybe you did, but, you know, that's probably not indicative of people who actually vote here.
I think between the two, there might have been one or two.
Perhaps, but it's listed on here as oceanfront, 23459. And 23459 is basically four-story, and that's it. 23460 is basically an ASOceana, and that's it. So, and that's listed as Northeast. And I don't really think that's Northeast. I mean, that's kind of the center of the city. So it's just, my concern is when I look at that, it's just, it's not, the plate, I'm not disputing the results, but the way it's being reported is not accurate here at all with respect to the neighborhood. So when you say Northeast did this or anything like that, I mean, 23454 is another example. That goes from General Booth all the way up to the Great Neck Peninsula. So that's kind of a long swath through here. What would probably be more helpful to us anyway is to take a look at this in relation to council districts or voting districts or things like that, because those are areas, and we understand that. But, so, for example, when I take a look at, you know, I represent two of the three major neighborhoods in 23452. Mr. Berluci represents one of the neighborhoods in 23452. And their difference, and their issues are completely different. For example, the northern part of that didn't have any severe flooding issues, but I would, the council is very well-aware that the southern part of 23452 had significant flooding issues. And I think they would have a completely different opinion on the city's response to flooding and things like that because of their specific experiences. And we talk about that a lot when I go to speak to civic leagues. Some of them say, "Well, why are you spending so much money on flooding?" And others are saying, "Why aren't you spending more?" And you can get that same disparity in this one zip code. So, and by the way, none of them is at Chimney Hill. So that's, that's just the one thing I'd say. Is I would, you know, it's good information. I can't really use this document, though, because if I shared it with civic leagues, it would reference neighborhoods and things that aren't accurate. So it would be good if it was actually redone that had the accurate information. But that's one of my comments.
So what I'm hearing is it's the neighborhood name. We did, we did everything and tracked everything by zip code. So I'm hearing the neighborhood names don't match up for you, but not only that, you want to see within each zip code it broken down into what you classify as your districts.
Well, the districts are classified by the city, by, and they are defined. But the zip code issue, and I understand it's easier for y'all to use zip codes than anything else, but...
Sure it is.
If you, do you have somebody's address when you talk to them, or you just have their zip code?
Phone number, zip code.
Yeah, so that, you're not going to be able to get districts out of that because 23452 has at least Rose Hall... 23452 has at least Rose Hall and Lynn Haven in it. 23454 has Princess Anne, Hoosh Beach, and, and Lynn Haven in it. It's 23460, and the others, you know, aren't really, they're in the districts, but they, but they aren't, there's no voters there, so.
John?
On that mark, all federal data, you know, is aggregated, first collected at the census tract level, and then aggregated. That is the fundamental building block for federal data, the census tract. Probably looking forward, that might be a better building base to track the address to the census tract, because that's what voting precincts track, too. That's what voting district analysis has to be based on. So, that's the most fundamental building block of databases, the census tract.
Okay, anybody else?
So, Council, I'm, I'm certainly hearing that what we need to do is go back and, and basically find a better identifier to associate with each zip code. The report won't change, but certainly it'll be, perhaps it'll make a little more sense to the viewer as they see that area.
Well, especially if you're gonna, if I could, Mr. Mayor, if you're gonna put this one report online, the, the PowerPoint presentation, maybe that can be changed to at least remove the references to the names of the neighborhood, because that's going to be confusing to people. Because, again, you know, Chimney Hill being a small neighborhood, not in that zip code, is, is, is of concern to people, so...
And, Mr. Wood, we can remove the references to the neighborhoods in the report as well, and reprint and get you an updated, and when we post online, we'll also remove those references from that.
Yeah, because it's, it's good information, and, you know, when we go to civic leagues and, and talk, talk also about the popular financial report that we got delivered to us as well, that I spoke to Mr. Bradley and Mr. Leahy about, you know, that, that, that's good information to take to civic leagues, too, because you don't have to, you know, have, have a great foundation municipal finance. You can just show them these details, and this is also good information to, to share with people. So, it's just good, but I, I promise you, citizens would pick up on that like this when, when they see the zip codes and the, and the neighborhoods, but...
Right.
That'd be good information.
Is it possible to include in the package a overlay that shows the voting districts, perhaps, as they, and zip codes, so people can see? And might also reveal a name, naming?
Yeah, it may be helpful also that if we know exactly where people have dissatisfaction with road sidewalks or whatever, that it can help with budget priorities and everything, too. Anybody else?
Let me point out one thing. We do, we do a lot of...
Second to podium, sir, with the microphone.
Sure. We do a lot of political polls for cities and counties around the country, and we've certainly done a number through the years for Virginia Beach. And then we use the, the election listings of people, which we can define then down to districts. So, we do show charts like what we've been showing here, but on a district level rather than a zip code. So, that's possible to do the next time, and if we really wanted to take a deep dive into neighborhoods, we would just have to expand the sample this time from 500, maybe, to 800, 900, to be able to have a representative sample of those smaller neighborhoods. Not impossible, very possible to do it. If there, and from what I'm hearing, it looks like they're within a different zip code. There are big differences between east-west, north-south, depending on it is. So, if you want to get to that level of detail, just have to increase the sample size next time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, very good report, and thank you for all your hard work on this.
All right, so, Council, our next presentation is on the Virginia Beach and Norfolk and Navy Joint Land Use Study. Our presenter will be Mr. Ben McFarlane, Senior Regional Planner from the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. They were the entity that actually was the project manager for the Jalen study.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
Thank you for having me. It's good to be here again, just today, I was just here earlier today. So, as, as Tom mentioned, I'm going to be giving you all briefing and overview of what we did with the Norfolk and Virginia Beach Joint Land Use Study. This is a, an interesting and a very exciting opportunity, I think, for the region to look at some of the challenges of flooding and sea level rise, and what our communities are already doing, and look at that through the lens of, of what the military in Hampton Roads and Southampton Roads needs. In this case, you know, we know that there's a lot of work that's already been going on in the region with regards to resiliency, with regards to flooding and sea level rise. Virginia Beach is, is at the very forefront of those efforts. We also have quite a bit of experience working with the military. The previous joint land use study that was done for Southampton Roads, for Naval Air Station Oceana, and some of the other airfields in Southampton Roads, has been held up as one of the, the shining examples of what can happen when the military and local communities come together to work and to collaboratively address some of these challenges. And, and when you go talk to some of the folks at the DOD about these types of studies, that one has held up as a, as a big success story. For this one, we, we were really excited to be able to take advantage of this opportunity to use a Department of Defense process, the Joint Land Use Study process, to really officially bring together the Navy, the four different installations that we worked with, and the two cities, Norfolk and Virginia Beach, to work together on identifying exactly how these kinds of impacts would affect military operations in Hampton Roads, but also to, to work together to identify mutually beneficial solutions. And we really do think that this study can help tee us up for, for additional assistance down the road, whether from the state or from the federal government. There are a couple of different exciting grant opportunities that are recently developed at the federal level that we think that we're going to be able to qualify for now. And certainly, we are huge fans of the work that the city's already been doing with its resiliency work, and we think that this study, the Joint Land Use Study dovetails nicely with that. So, for us, as Tom mentioned, the HR PDC, we're the project manager, or administrator for this project. We signed the paperwork. We were the ones that officially applied for it with the Office of Economic Adjustment. We worked with four different installations in this study. Joint Expeditionary Base, Little Creek, Fort Story, Naval Air Station Oceana, Naval Station Norfolk, and Naval Support Activity Hampton Roads, and then obviously both cities, Norfolk and Virginia Beach. AECOM was our prime consultant. We had a few others that were tasked with specific components of it, but they were the ones that conducted the bulk of the work. Just the geography of the area that we looked at, again, those four installations. Many of the, the joint land use studies that are out there deal with specific encroachment issues. Since we wanted to look at the impacts of flooding, we wanted to expand that geography so that we'd be able to get in, to understand some of the, the impacts that were not just right next door to these installations, but further out. So, for our, our people, the, the folks that were working on it from the Navy perspective and from the city perspective, we had a technical committee of staff-level folks, and we also had a policy committee that had officials from each city and also representatives from the Navy. These were the four questions that we, that we framed the study around. One was, what, when we talk about flooding, what do we really mean? If we're talking about hurricanes or, or major events, that's going to drive us in one direction. If we're talking about daily nuisance flooding, that's going to drive us in a different direction. In this case, we went with that latter scenario. Where, where should we be focusing our attention? It would be nice if we could have studied the entire Southampton Roads region, but obviously, we need to be able to focus in in order to deal with the resources that we have. What's important to the Navy? Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on your perspective, the Navy can't really tell us exactly what they would like to see in terms of specific projects. There are certain federal regulations that prevent them from having that kind of input. They can come to our meetings, and they can tell us kind of generally what they might support or what their needs are, but they can't come and tell us that you should add a third lane to, to some road in the, in the city. That's, that's not their job. And so, we needed to elicit what they might prioritize for projects by understanding what their needs were. And then, once we understand what they're, what they really need, we can start to prioritize or suggest priorities based on those, those needs. So, as I mentioned before, we settled on deciding to look at nuisance flooding. So, this, this map here shows the areas that we were looking at with different levels of sea level rise. So, the specific scenario we looked at was minor tidal flooding, which is about a foot and a half above mean high water. And then we looked at one and a half and three feet of sea level rise, and that, those two sea level rise scenarios were chosen based on the input of both cities. We understand that both Norfolk and Virginia Beach were working, using those scenarios for their individual efforts, and we, we thought that it would be good to try to make sure that these studies were all in alignment as much as possible. Once we knew which areas would be affected by flooding, we took a look at how that would affect transportation and access. The colors, it's hard to kind of tell a little bit, they're kind of small on the map here, and I think, no, can't really, okay. So, you can kind of see these, the blue and the red kind of splotches on the map here. Those are roadways or segments that are actually flooded under, given scenarios that we talked about. So, minor tidal flooding, thank you, with no sea level rise, or with one and a half, and then three, three feet of sea level rise. But the, the real impacts start to show when we look at how flooding on roadways affects access to community facilities and infrastructure, and that's what this map here shows. The big red areas, those are those that would have some sort of blocked access to one or more community facilities. The orange areas show blocked or either indirect access, so you might have to take a longer route to get to someplace. And then the yellow areas show slightly lesser impact to only one or a couple of facilities that would either be blocked or would have indirect access. And again, these are with the same flooding scenarios that we used throughout the study. And the different types of community assets, we looked at things like fire stations, police stations, hospitals, schools, treatment plants for water and wastewater. Those were the, the suite of community facilities that the technical committee outlined for us as, as the kind of things we should be looking at. And the, the goal of, of taking a look at the impact of access on community facilities that we wanted to convey through this study was that we know that the Navy has its operations inside the fence, but also that the days of having military installations as islands are, for the most part, over. They rely on community facilities, they rely on community neighborhoods and infrastructure. And this kind of analysis here gets us a much better sense of exactly how the military installations in these two cities are relying on the infrastructure that the cities and the residents of Norfolk and Virginia Beach pay for. Once we had a sense of kind of where these initial impacts to access and to communities' facilities were going to be, we were able to prioritize these areas here to, to really narrow down the suite of projects that we were going to start to consider. And then that was able, we were able to take that, combine it with some discussions that we had with the Navy about what they valued. So, in this case, the biggest thing that they valued was access, reliable and resilient access to, for DOD personnel and their dependents to get to and from the installations that we were talking about, the four that we looked at in the study. We also talked about things like well-maintained stormwater management systems, obviously a big topic for this council, and then also utility networks as well. And we were able to take these values, and we used, we, we turned them into criteria that we could use to score candidate projects that each community had submitted, and, and these different four categories, installation readiness, DOD personnel readiness, community co-benefits, and system performance. And these, so the technical committee, we, we went through, we had a, a two-day workshop to kind of hash out exactly what these meant and, and what kind of things we should be looking at. So, things like reducing flood risk along a strategic corridor, improving access to a community facility. There are some opportunity for community recreation or health co-benefits that were there. The point of these was to be able to score those projects. In this case, it's a little subtle on, on this, on the slide here, but installation readiness, because this is a, a study looking at the needs of the military and what communities can do to address those needs, installation readiness was weighted the highest amount for this study, and then personnel readiness rated a little bit less, and then community co-benefits and system performance, we use those to kind of differentiate between projects that might have the same level of benefit for a military installation, but not necessarily for the community. Once we went through that, that whole process of scoring the different candidate projects, we settled on 22 actions. These are either projects or suggestions for additional study to focus on kind of identifying and developing specific solutions, designs, and whatnot. We also identified 23 policies that we're calling regional coordination strategies and seven conversations. So, we did, as I mentioned, we focused on, on flooding and sea level rise when we were looking at this study, but when we had our conversations with the Navy, they brought up some other issues as well. We didn't have the time or the resources to address all of these needs that they identified, but we did want to make sure that we documented what those might be, knowing that this is going to be just part of an ongoing relationship with the Navy. So, those are what those conversations are for. They're there as a way to document kind of what some of the concerns were for these installations, so that we might have a roadmap moving forward for other things that might need to be discussed. These are the top eight projects. Again, as I mentioned, these were all suggested, either are specifically in a study or capital improvements program already, or some flavor of a project that's already in there. The top two projects are what we're calling comprehensive flood mitigation and stormwater management strategies for Hampton Boulevard and Shore Drive. These two corridors were identified as the, the key corridors for, for the Navy in Southampton Roads, and dealing with the flooding on those corridors in a comprehensive manner that addresses infrastructure, that addresses community needs and development pressure, and addresses the issues of the, the needs of the neighborhoods surrounding those corridors. We looked at, when we were looking at these, we, we quickly realized that it would not just be about the road itself, and so that's why we're using this terminology right here. One of the things we were able to do as part of the study was we asked AECOM and their team to help us think through and from a design framework what some potential opportunities might be that the cities had not already identified or not already specifically designed. And in this case, for Virginia Beach, the, the area that we decided to focus on as a group was how can we address flooding that's happening on Joint Expeditionary Base Little Creek that is in part caused by the stormwater management system that is both on base and immediately off the base? And in this case, we looked at, so there's the, like Lake Bradford and Chubb Lake, there are, so we have a Boone Clinic that's actually on the base, that the parking lot floods, access to that clinic is shut down. There are a lot, a whole lot of other flooding issues that happen on Little Creek, but this was one that the team was able to take a look at and see what kind of strategy that the city and the Navy could work out together that would possibly address this flooding. And in this case, the identification of some additional pumps and moving some other infrastructure around to control the water level in those reservoirs as a one helpful strategy, and then also to move, to use a pump located in Little Creek Cove to keep water, to, to pump water that's happening on base onto the, into the body of water there outside of a weir, that that would help to address some of that flooding on base, moving on, especially into the future when we think about things like sea level rise and more water just being there in the system to begin with. So, again, this was, I just want to reiterate that this was a, a kind of a design, what's the word I'm looking for here, a, an exercise that we asked AECOM to do to help us kind of get our heads around some issues. This is not a, one of the recommended actions here, but we do think that this, this exercise here, and also the one that was done for the city of Norfolk, can provide some springboards to additional discussion or thoughts about possibilities that either city has not necessarily considered just yet. We did, we had, late last year in August, we had two, two final public meetings for this, one in the city of Norfolk at the TED, and then one also in Virginia Beach at the Con, or the Sandler Center, excuse me. Had pretty good attendance from, from the public. We had some, several public comments that were received, all that were addressed at the, during the Q and A as part of that, those meetings, things on issues such as flooding or green infrastructure and funding. We did have a couple of things that were tweaked and added to the report. One, a modification considering Norfolk's flood plain management ordinance, that was a technical correction that their staff requested us to make, and then additional discussion of the airport issue. So, there are concerns that the Navy has about the possible expansion of Norfolk International Airport. So, we encouraged through that, through this study, that that would be an issue that both the city and the region and the airport and the Navy might be able to take a look at further down the road and, and do some more comprehensive assessment of how, how the airport might sustain itself and also maintain the level of activity at Little Creek. I think that might be the, yeah, so, so, moving forward with this, a couple of specific next steps. One is, you know, we are suggesting at the PDC that each city adopt a resolution of support for the study and its findings. We think that would set us up well as a region to receive OEA implementation grants. So, Office of Economic Adjustment is the entity at the Department of Defense that actually funds these joint land use studies. Once you've completed a study, you are then eligible to receive implementation grants, which can help with a whole lot of different projects that would, that would address specific issues identified in these studies. In this case, it can help with up to a 30 percent design of a project, which is not, not, not everything, and obviously, we would love to be able to get some construction funding from that, but it's not allowed under the current authorization from Congress. It's a 10 percent non-federal match, so the, so OEA, in this case, would be paying for approximately 90 percent of the project. So, moving forward, that's, that's where we're suggesting both cities go, and this point, just want to remember or actually reiterate that in this case, I think, looking forward with, from the study, we see this as a model for continued collaboration and partnership between the cities and the Navy. We hope that the Navy's not going anywhere in Southampton Roads anytime soon, but that this model of, of working together at a staff level and at a policy level where we can address technical issues, we can address, you know, on-the-ground issues at that level, and have productive working relationships, and then also have additional discussions at the policymaking level, that that would be, that this is going to be a model for us moving forward, and we hope to, to be able to replicate the success elsewhere in the region and to continue these discussions moving on into the future. That's all I have for my prepared... That's all I have for my prepared remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Any questions at all?
One is the, have we included the actual installations that are here into our comprehensive, supposedly comprehensive digital flood model that we've built? Go ahead, Tony, why don't you come on up and...
So the, um, the stormwater master plan, all the models are complete and Little Creek was one of the watersheds that we've studied. So we have been working closely with the base and getting the information on the structures to include in our model.
And did, so is that information we can get? That'd be great. Following up on that, did we actually, did they share what, they have a master plan for their base and they have their five-year public, you know, it's been shared with the Congress. So did they share with us what their program plans were for their own improvement of their and drainage systems internal to their base that they had, that they have programmed? And did we assess how that would impact using the model? Was that part of your study?
No, we did not get, no.
Okay, okay.
The model's based on land use, so, and which is, which tells you what the impervious area is. So I'm sure we use a impervious area that's similar typical to military bases and we know the, the discharge points.
Well, I thought we, our graphic system was also capturing the underlying drainage systems piping. And when I asked my question, I wasn't asking just for this OV1, I'm asking for the decomposition of the digitization that we're doing and have we included that subsurface infrastructure in our model?
Yes.
Okay, we have. So then that assessment could be done. My last question is, and I know they, when we're looking at making the improvements through the gates, that's all sounds great, but did we collect the data based upon information they have as to where their employees are distributed, such that if you looked end to end, might be nice that you can get into the gate, but can you get to where the gate is? Because in reality, that's what the readiness end to end is, is not only being able to get in the gate, but if they're coming off of Lynn Haven Park where there's three feet of water on it, no one's getting to Independence Boulevard to get to that gate. So I don't know, when you looked at these assessments, I'm not saying they're not good projects, but I'm looking at the dependency relationship between if you do this project, what's the order you would do this project in and scheme of the whole CIP that they're sequenced correctly to deliver the, the benefit that the installation would think they were getting, which everyone doesn't live on the base, you're right? They commute big distances and just, and you can't do everyone, I understand that too, but to understand where the people are coming from gives you a better indication of what other connective, use tissue for a word, connective tissue projects have to get done in the sequencing to deliver the benefit. I'm sure that might be the next stage, but if you're going to 30% design of something, you really need to know, I think, what also has to happen to get, to achieve that benefit.
I'll, I'll try to answer your question. I, the, on Little Creek, the gate issue and flooding and the fact that during certain situations, the, the base is kind of bifurcated by water and you can't get from one side to another, did, that did come up extensively throughout our discussions. And so I would assume, this, assumptions are dangerous, some things sometimes, but that in their input on the, the candidate projects, that the priority of where they would put improvements to the, the western gate versus the eastern gate were reflected in the, the input that they shared with us overall. But as you said, the design component of that would have to wait. And we do have in the study a recommendation to, to do a much more thorough analysis of, of how flooding, what, what is causing the flooding on Little Creek that causes that bifurcation and then what those potential solutions might be.
One of the neat things of having all this digitized in our highways, if you can overlay that, because they have this information where their employees work through zip codes and all, where they're coming from, you then can see the interaction between what you're modeling and the flood part. That's one thing we've got to say, that's going to happen no matter where the people are coming from, right?
Right.
And I can see probably a lot of them do live along the Shore Drive corridor, but if we're looking, trying to deliver the effect, which is getting the biggest number of employees to the installation or families using it, then if you have an idea of where they're living and you overlay that, then you can really see now that, when we're looking at our CIP, you get, and making those trade-offs, you say, what integration of projects is going to get us the result? And saying, oh my gosh, we did this, but 50% of our people live in Kenstall and they're never going to get there. Well, then you might say, doing the infrastructure projects where they're at the headwaters, so to speak, makes more sense to start there and then make the last thing you do is the delivery point, because that's the, that's the last step. I'm not saying what the right answer is, I'm just saying when you're doing a systems and systems analysis, that's, I hope, something that we are considering. And I can assure you, the residents out there do their own systems analysis, not the town halls that are out there, but those are the kind of questions you get asked, because they make those things. And I just want to make sure that, that we're thinking ahead and we're, I realize this is just a start, but this is, we've got a lot of projects to do and people want to understand how they were chosen. Thank you very much. It was nice to...
Yeah. I tell you, this is a very important thing, you know, in discussing with Navy officials and Department of Defense, this is a high priority in terms of what they consider is necessary for their necessary military readiness, you know, the transportation of manpower's and materials, you know, throughout the region. And I think John brings out some, you know, good points. You know, their, getting access to the base is going to be, you know, really important during, you know, times of necessity. So the thing is, you know, this is an important thing. We're glad we're working with our friends in Norfolk on this in collaboration with the Navy, but you know, we really do have to really take a look at the big picture. So, but once again, thank you very well.
Thank you.
Very good.
So, is Ms. Johnson here yet? We had heard that Ms. Johnson was going to run late and we might have to switch the disparity update and in front of the Minority Business Council annual report.
Now, let's go ahead and do that. Get my paperwork out. Oh, here she is.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Just had to say the word and they're...
Just like that, we appear, right?
Well, good, good. No timing, but great timing, huh?
There you go. That's correct.
So, Mayor and council members, I'm very pleased to present Ms. Sheila Johnson, who's the Chair of our Minority Business Council. And after they get a little bit of rearranging and get set up, Ms. Johnson's going to give us a presentation on the Minority Business Council annual report.
Am I in charge of the clicker?
Well, you can be, or Howard will, can do it, you can, you get your choice.
Go, Howard.
Okay, so you'll just, he'll kind of, when you flip, he'll flip and you tell him to go forward or backward.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And the, the laser won't work on the TV, but, so we have the old...
Okay, I can point if I need to.
That's not to hit Tom though.
Okay, 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 thank you. Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sheila Johnson. I am the Chair of the Virginia Beach Minority Business Council. Before I begin, I'd like to say, Mayor Dyer, thank you for having us, council members as well, and Mr. Leahy, thank you for having us. I'd also, thank you, thank you. I'd also like to recognize our MBC members and associates that are in the room. Thank you so much for coming on today. I'd also like to take this opportunity to give a big shout out, I guess, if I could, in regards to our liaisons, Councilman Rouse and Councilman Jones. And I'd also like to say thank you so much for city staff, for your support, as well as the city attorneys. Thank you so much. And so if we can, I wanted to share a little bit of information in regards to the vision of the Minority Business Council before we begin. The vision of the MBC is really to be the leading influence in connecting contractor resources with city opportunities and beyond. Our mission is to advance and facilitate an environment of business opportunities focusing on increasing expenditures to minority and women-owned businesses by the city of Virginia Beach as a means to further the city's economic development and vitality. And so in regards to our calendar events, as you can see from our calendar, of course, we have a full agenda each time that we meet. We meet monthly except for June, except for July, August, and December. In June, we hold our annual retreat. In November, instead of holding a traditional meeting, we have what we called our expo. And our expo is the piece that we hold for November in its place. And so each of our meetings begin with what we call Industry Hour. And so the Industry Hour is where we sort of leverage the expertise or the experience of subject matter experts. We invite them to come in to share information in regards to projects or opportunities that are currently available or getting ready to roll out for the business public. And so from here, we sort of leverage this not only to create the awareness component, but it is also an opportunity for these organizations to share information, ideas, et cetera, to support the growth and development of minority and women-owned businesses, including veteran-owned businesses as well. And some of these subject matter experts and, for example, opportunities that I just wanted to share or that you can see on this screen as well, since I have to use this thing, right? We can sort of point out that we have had, let's see, this is June, July. If you can go back just one, yes. And so we've had a number of businesses that have come in. MEB Construction was absolutely amazing. We've had Virginia Beach City Public Schools to come in and present. We've had BBC Research and Consulting to come in and speak as well. In addition to that, we've also had the Virginia Beach Police Department and others to come in to talk about opportunities, share information as to what may be available for businesses in the community as well. And so if we can move to the accomplishments page. And so accomplishments for 2019 include the disparity study. It was recommended and supported by the Virginia Beach Minority Business Council. It was completed in 2019. And some of the findings included the underutilization of minority, women-owned, and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses in city contracting. We also recommended a system to improve reporting. This new ERP system, which is a financial management tool or system, will be implemented in July of 2020. Some of the features of this tool is data collection, which will allow for improved reporting in awards and expenditures. It will also support the effort of supplier sourcing, meaning that it will allow solicitations to reach more minority, women, and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. We also developed partnerships with a number of chambers to include the Asian Chamber, the Asian Business, the Hampton Roads Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber, and the Black Chamber as well. In regards to small business resource, we consider ourselves a small business resource. We bring on an abundance of opportunities, opportunities for growth, development, networking, education, and mentoring for a number of businesses that connect with us. And some of those opportunities are created through our Industry Hour, as I just highlighted. We also have two signature events that take place, one in the spring and one in the fall. The fall is usually our largest event. We also are represented on a number of boards and commissions. That includes the Process Improvement Subcommittee, the Human Rights Commission, the 2020 Census We have increased social media presence. This is through our Outreach Committee. We have a dynamic team. We have support, we have supported and/or recommended city programs and ordinances. This includes the Economic Development Workshop Series, the Virginia Beach Small Business Institute, the Bond Waiver Program. This relates to construction projects and waives bonds for certain projects valued between $100,000 and $500,000. The Small Business Enhancement Program. This requires 50% of subcontractors' work to be performed by SWAM-certified businesses in the, in city construction projects. In addition to that, the Procurement Opportunity Committee, and then also the 12% minority-owned business expenditure goal. It was at 10% that the MBC recommended, but it is now at 12%. In regards to the 2020 goals, as relates to the disparity study, we will continue to review and make recommendations. There were nine recommendations and we would like to support all of the nine that were mentioned. There are a few that I'd like to highlight. The overall annual aspirational goal, it has been adjusted to 12%. The SWAM office, we would like to see a dedicated SWAM office. The contractors' goal for SWAM-certified businesses via the sheltered bidding. And part of that, the prompt payment system has already been adopted. Additional goals in regards to the sheltered bidding ordinance, I think that's the next page maybe? The sheltered bidding ordinance, it will limit solicitations to SWAM-certified businesses. Solicitations, of course, have to be reviewed and meet other criteria. This was presented to city council via our liaison, Councilman Rouse. The small business insurance requirements, small businesses have said that the insurance requirement for the city contracts are stringent. So that's something we need to take a closer look at as well. And then, of course, the e-procurement system. In regards to our next page, if you can switch that. In regards to our spring event, as I mentioned before, we have two signature events to engage businesses within the city of Virginia Beach. One of them is our spring event. This took place in April of the year, April 3rd of 2019. It was at the Advanced Technology Center. It usually runs from about 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. This year, we had about 110 attendees. That is, I think our target was probably 100 at that particular point. There, we have the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel Expansion Project Team to come in and speak. We had VDOT that was there. We had other individuals and partners there as well. The panel discussion included Clark Nixon, Lane Construction, MEB Contractors, SB Ballard, and others. If you can go to the next slide. And then our largest event, which is our annual expo that takes place in the fall of the year, November 7th on last year. And of course, that one was our 21st conference and expo. And so our guest speakers at this particular event was Robbie Wells and Darla Vaughn. They are part of the team, I am other. We utilized the ICE supplier portal for vendor registration. That was extremely helpful. We had a total of 60 resource partners at this event as well, and this includes city departments. The number of attendees for this event was 556. Those were the numbers that we could count. We had others that attended as well, but this was our largest MBC expo just yet. And so on the right-hand side, you can see the awardees for Small Business of the Year was Landon Coates. The Woman-owned Business of the Year was Joe Kell. The Minority Business of the Year was RGH Supplies. The Minority Business of the Year was RGH Supplies. And the Service Disabled Veteran-owned Business of the Year was Tactical and Survival Specialties. And so this is a great picture of many of the NBC members and associates. It was taken at the Expo. And of course, we're highlighting them at this particular point. And we certainly appreciate their efforts and support. They have been just outstanding volunteers. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Aaron?
I don't have a question. I'd just like to make a few comments.
Sure.
First of all, it's a pleasure to be able to work with you, the chair, and the rest of the NBC members who's in attendance today and those who aren't in attendance today. The second part of my comments would be go towards our council. We have nine recommendations from the disparity study. And so I think it's about time we start implementing a lot of the recommendations from that. And one of the things that's most important is the SWAM office. We need a dedicated SWAM office to really start getting, providing the tools for the NBC to be able to do their jobs. But not only just the NBC, but throughout the small businesses, within our, within our community as well. And so I really think it's important that we start utilizing and implementing a lot of what we got from the disparity study like yesterday. The other thing I would say as well is to our economic and development team, Mr. Adams and Ms. Allen, you guys do a great job of working with the NBC and providing a lot of things that they need in order to, to be successful and start, you know, accomplishing a lot of the goals. And so I like the coordination between the two departments. And I want to figure out how we can make that even more smoother as well. You all do such a great job. I'm so proud to have you there. As well as the city attorney office is always there to answer a lot of those tough questions. One of the things that I've challenged the NBC members this year is to, is to be bold in their aspirations and not just continuously settle for what we think is within our reach, but reach for those things that's, that's outside of our reach. So that way, we aim higher. And so they have answered that goal. And 2020 will be a big year, not only for the NBC, but for our city. So I'm looking forward to continue the great work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Sabrina and then Michael.
I would just like to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Rouse. I too agree that we need to implement all of the recommendations that were submitted in the findings from BBC. Actually, next month, we're coming up on a year since BBC submitted their report and their, and their findings. And I just believe that in order to address the goal, in order to work in tandem and assist the NBC with the goal of implementing all of the recommendations, I think we need to, as a council, vote and support a resolution that will actually implement all of those findings. Some have been implemented, some are in progress. But I think that it would speak value and that it would have a, a, an impactful effect if we, as a council, would agree to accept a resolution that would implement all of those findings. And I have worked and asked for the attorney, city attorney and with his staff, and they have actually provided a draft. And so I will be submitting that before the council so that they can review it, so that we can assist the NBC and work to make sure that all of those recommendations are implemented so that we can actually get to that goal and beyond, as Councilmember Rouse has stated.
Yeah, and certainly going into the budget process, this would be, you know, the ideal time to start weighing those and, you know, work that into the plan.
Absolutely.
Okay. Michael?
Well, I have a comment and a question. So I'd like to begin by thanking Ms. Johnson and all the members of the Minority Business Council who made time out of their day to join us today. I think the impact of so many members of the council making time to be here today isn't lost on me. It's a reflection of the commitment to your work and, and also to the spirit of teamwork that I know exists on the Minority Business Council. And I think that's worth pointing out here. And I think it's really important. And I'll spare you from going around individually and recognizing you. But I think it's worth noting that while the focus of the Minority Business Council is on business and entrepreneurism, that each of you, and I know many of the people who are in the room and are very familiar with their work in the community as well and with your associations with important nonprofits and your work to empower young people and inspire others. And, and I appreciate that work. And I, I don't think it's, even though we make a distinction sometimes with our nonprofit work and our business lives, I believe that they're inextricably linked. And so the work you're doing at the Minority Business Council to empower others is one that is connected to the health of our community in other ways. And I just want you to know how grateful I am for that work and how, that I do recognize that connection and that relationship. And so if there's anything I can do to be supportive of the work you're doing, I hope that you will count on me. And so that's my comments. Just appreciate everything you're doing. The question I have is if you could speak a little bit. Councilmember Rouse did share with us a draft of the Sheltered Bidding Ordinance about two months ago or so. And, and suggested that probably he would be bringing that forward at the recommendation of the Minority Business Council sometime in the new year. And I wonder if you could just take a moment and speak a little bit about that ordinance, what your perspective is on it, why, or how you think it would be impactful. And I'm happy to talk with you offline as well, but just briefly share a little perspective on that.
Sure. Rebecca, did you want to share that information now?
Sure.
Okay. Rebecca, go ahead and detail across that.
Sure. Thank you. So the sheltered bidding, as proposed, was drafted actually before the disparity study. And there were very few changes of that, but, but it was put on, on hold until the results of the disparity study to see if any changes needed to be made. The only change that we made in that was to change the aspirational goal to reflect the new aspirational goal. So it's an idea that's been around a while. Basically, what it does is, it is a situation where we take certain bids that meet certain criteria, and we only allow SWAM-certified businesses to bid on them. So they still have to meet all the criteria. It's still a competition. We're not giving business away. But what we're saying is we're going to shelter or only allow SWAM-certified businesses to bid on those items. And they have to meet certain criteria, and that's laid out in the resolution. And then at that point, if they're not SWAM-certified.
Just, you know, and we can get into more detail another time. But what are some of those criteria?
There is, and I don't remember off the top of my head, dynamite. But, oh, well, thank you. So construction with an expected value of not more than $500,000. So that would be very helpful. I know construction is an area where we struggle, particularly with prime contractors. And so allowing those sorts of things. The idea is sort of to get, to allow people to help get their foot in the door. Because when we do large construction, we do look at, you know, do they have that kind of experience? Do they have that kind of capacity? And having smaller jobs, learning to work with the government, giving them an edge, sort of helps construction companies grow. And so the idea is that it wouldn't be long-term only that business, but that would allow them to grow into someone who could do more. Sorry. Does that, does that answer?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I want to, well, we'll talk about it later. Thank you, though. But I, but I will say in conclusion that there was a time, and this is not unique to Virginia Beach. There, there has, it is true that opportunity has not always been equally accessible for everyone. And, and that's part of the history of our country. And it's certainly in Virginia Beach, we aren't immune from the impacts of that history. And so I just want to emphasize that I recognize the importance of your work and making sure that each of us has an opportunity to be successful and to fulfill our potential. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, if I could just say thank you so much for all that the Minority Business Council does. Over the years, there have been a seamless continuum of excellence in leadership and participation by members who give their time, talent, and treasure to, you know, to work to make our city better. But also to employ the city staff, Laverne and everybody that have worked in beautiful harmony together over the years to, you know, to produce these outcomes. And, you know, just keep it going. Thank you to the liaisons for the work that you're doing. And, you know, and, you know, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Great job.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you all for your time, and we are definitely a team. You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
So councilmembers, while they're setting up, there was a sheet being passed around allowing people to sign up for various time blocks for the retreat facilitator to interview you by telephone. So if we keep that sheet moving around so we could get it as complete as possible, I, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much. So following on the heels of our, of our report on the progress and the accomplishments of the Minority Business Council, I'd like now to present Alice Kelly, our Director of Finance. And Alice is going to give us an update on the disparity study.
I'm going to tag-team this, so it's not going to be me up here giving a 10-minute or 15-minute presentation. But I'd like to talk a little bit about our city programs. There was a question a couple of weeks ago about our Procurement Opportunity Committee. I think, Ms. Henley, you had mentioned about, do we still do that? And yes, that's very active in our, our city program. We've done this since 2016. It was formed to assist our small businesses in preparing for helping manage and seeking contracts. We coach, mentor, and provide a lot of outreach and education to these businesses. And we introduce them to members of not only our purchasing department, but also our department representatives, our SWAM Business Development Manager over in the Economic Development Direct Department. And basically, set them up to help them come up and do contracts. This year, in FY19, we had 10 businesses that were either minority business or women businesses that received city contracts for a total of 3.7 million. So out of the, out of all of the businesses, we had 13 businesses come through, about one a month, and 10 already received awards from the city. So it was very successful. Since the inception since 2016, we've had 22 small businesses receive over 8.3, and about over 30 businesses have gone through this Procurement Opportunity Committee. Some of the examples of companies are iCollaboration, Townsend Media, L4 Enterprises, TST Roofing. It's also received the outstanding achievement in local government innovation. And all the cities have asked us about it and tried to emulate it. 2011, we've had a bond waiver program. I think Sheila had mentioned that. We've had five approved bond waivers this year alone, totaling over $1.4 million, which allows small businesses to do a lot more business with the city. We've had a Small Business Enhancement Program requiring prime contractors to subcontract 50% of their work. We've had that since 2011. Virginia Beach Small Business Institute was revamped this year. And in FY19, we had 27 small businesses go through this program. It's basically soup to nuts. Is your business ready? How do you take an idea to market? How do you get financing, sustaining your business, and doing business not only with the city, but also in the city? So it's a collaborative effort between the Minority Business Council, the Economic Development Department, and the City Purchasing Division to make sure that we reach out and educate businesses. And we've already done one in FY20 and plan to do a second one in FY20. Laverre Tolentino is going to talk about the 2019 outreach efforts we've had to businesses.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and members of council. Outreach efforts for our team include, we are members of the Carolinas Virginia Minority Supplier Development Council, and that is a regional group. And they, they are under a national organization called the National Minority Supplier Development Council. And we are members of them. They had a conference here actually in August of 2019. And at that conference, the city of Virginia Beach was awarded the Public Service of the Year Award. We received that award, and we attend their business opportunity conferences as well. And that was a big part of economic development. They kind of got together and said, hey, you know, this might be a good award for us. And we were able to accomplish that goal. In addition, in working with economic development, we've worked with the library. And inside the library, there is a Small Business Resource Center inside the central library. We've also collaborated, as Ms. Johnson said, with the Hampton Roads Business Chambers and Associations. We've collaborated, collaborated a lot with economic development, especially with their SWAM Business Forum, as well as their Small Business Workshop Series. We've also had some events that were held by other folks, you know, Ferguson Enterprises and Newport News. We attended their event where they hosted a construction of their headquarters building. This is the third headquarters building that they had. And we went to obtain information so that we could bring that back to the small businesses here in Virginia Beach. We also work with the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel Expansion Project, hosting HR Connector Partners, who's the prime contractor on that event, along with Virginia Department of Transportation. These opportunities allow us to increase our database of minority businesses that are out there that we may not know exist or may not be aware of the programs that we have here in the city. And we're allowed to share that information with them. Again, the Minority Business Conference and Expo, that's, again, their signature, one of their signature events. We're instrumental in assisting the NBC in planning that event, as well as their Spring Contractors Roundtable. Old Dominion University, we attend their Small Business Resource Day. And then we have a partnership with the Department of Small Business and Supply Diversity out of Richmond. We actually have a representative, Angela Barber, who's in the purchasing office. And she assists small businesses with obtaining their certification, their SWAM certification. And then they have a Scaling for Growth Program, which we participate as part of a panel for them on that, with that program. And as Ms. Kelly talked about, our Procurement Opportunity Committee has been very successful in awarding contracts to minority and woman-owned businesses. And we also have project information sessions. So project information sessions, the, the most recent one we had was with the Sports Center. And what we do is we bring that team in, MEB and ESM, and they talk about the subcontracting opportunities that are available for small businesses. We've had a couple of small businesses that have been awarded contracts through this project information session. And then we always have our Small Business debriefing sessions. This allows small businesses, if they win a contract with the city or if they don't win a contract with the city, if they submitted a bid, then they can come in and look at the bid and see where they fell in that area of, of, you know, of the award. We also have the Small Business Institute, which Ms. Kelly talked about. And that's been very successful. We had one in May of 2019. We had 27 participants. And then we just recently, we had another one in the fall, in October, which had about 25 participants in that one. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca Key, who's our purchasing agent, and she'll provide details on the award and expenditure data. Let me mention one more thing that Sheila wanted to mention, and that was the Minority Business Commission. Members of the Minority Business Council are, are part of the, they've been attending meetings on the Minority Business Commission, and it's House Bill 124, I believe. The governor and his, his administration, they're thinking about having a Minority Business Commission. I think Mayor Dyer, you were, this was one of your initiatives with the treasurer from Newport News.
That is correct.
And so we have two members from the NBC who serve on that committee and who attend the meetings on that. And the interesting thing is they're going, they're thinking about modeling that commission behind Virginia Beach's NBC. So I think that's a testament to how well the NBC works and how hard they work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. So as promised the last time we did this presentation, this has changed. We have changed how we pull the data and how we present it to you to more closely mimic what was shown to you in the disparity study so that we can more closely align our numbers and follow a little more detail about how these things are happening. So one of the new numbers that we have are awards. So in the past, we've done expenditures because that's the data that we've had. We've put more contracts into the system, and we feel like we have a good system now for giving you award data. So the first slide is the award data for minority business enterprises. So the first slide is the award data for minority business enterprises. And the total award, and that's from our total amount, is 5.8%. If you notice the little notes at the bottom, if there is a business that is women-owned and minority-owned, it will be put in this category. So we won't count it twice again in the women-owned businesses. So if it is minority and women-owned, it will fall in the minority business category. Second, we have the awards for the women business enterprises. So again, 5.8%. That's not an accident. They really did fall that closely together. So we saw that as well. So these are awards. Again, these are contracts that we've given, awards that we've made, but not expenditures. The FY19 overall awards are at 11.6%. And you can see it broken down in the four categories that were broken down in the disparity study as well. The next slide shows a breakdown of those minority dollars so we can see more closely which minority groups are either sliding a little or increasing somewhat so that we can get in there and really see exactly where maybe there are barriers that we're unaware of, or something is happening in that particular community. And then the next slide shows some of the contracts. The larger contracts, of course, show most of the money, right? It's that 80/20 rule. So we've got some of our largest contract awards with minority business and women business firms. So you can see sort of the overall idea of what we're doing. It's not in one area. It's not in one place. We really are starting to bridge out and see contracts out in multiple areas. We've got technology. We've got construction. We've got consulting. So we're pretty proud of how we're branching out and not just putting it in one area. Now we'll move on to spend, which is the numbers we're somewhat used to seeing. For the minority business enterprise, our total expenditures in FY19 was 4.0%, which is considerably less than it was the year before, partially because the Lesnar Bridge Project is wrapping up, and that was a very large project that had a lot of subcontractors and things in that. And so that's why we're seeing a bit of a number there. The women business enterprise, we've actually increased that to 5.4% of our total dollars, just over 28 million. So if you look at those combined, we're at 9.5%. And again, we break that down by contract type as mimicked in the, in the study. Another slide with the expenditures that shows where the minority break down. Again, that gives us an idea of how to look at particular groups and see if we're failing one particular group or doing great in one group, and what are we doing so we can spread that around. And we've got this similar slide here for expenditures by firm. So once again, you can see that we are making some strides in spreading the types of contracts that we're spending money on. We've got technology, again, construction. We do have some consulting, electrical, things of that nature, which is nice to see. And then, last but not least, we've got the service-disabled veterans. Same slides, and these are awards and expenditures, just to make this a little, a little shorter. So you've got the awards and expenditures on the same slide there. For the disparity study recommendations, we wanted to speak to those a little. Of course, the resolution was passed for the minority-owned business aspirational goals, and we have changed all of our templates. We do quarterly training because it's nice that we know, but we need the entire city to know. And so we do quarterly trainings to explain what that means, how we achieve that, how important that is to us so that we've got one message. The SWAM office right now, purchasing division, has a three-person operation that's fully dedicated to the SWAM programs. And then there's an additional position in economic development, and they certainly support us in that piece. Data collection, still relatively difficult, still manual. The ERP, financial resource, is going really well. We're still on track to implement on July 1st. We're very excited. We did something our implementer had never done before and kind of jumped the gun, getting our suppliers in because we had the NBC's wonderful expo to do that. And so we were able to sign up a lot of vendors and able to talk to them about doing business. One of the things that we talk about with the ERP system, which is great, is data collection. And it gives us more real-time data, which will be nice. But we also will have something called an eProcurement System within that ERP, excuse me. And what that allows us to do is put those solicitations out to everyone proactively so businesses can go and sign up themselves. And they can see whatever they want to see in that system by choosing what commodities they want to see. They can choose them all. They can choose only construction or only electrical. And when a solicitation is put out by anyone in the city, even if it's small, those businesses will be able to see those solicitations, and they'll know that they're happening. And that's something that doesn't happen today because it's manual. And so we reach out to as many as we can. But in the future, we'll reach out to all of them. And so our big push, and we're working with several offices here at the city, to make sure we get the word out and get as many people signed up in that as we can. Growth monitoring. We identified the need to collect data on the impact of the SWAM programs. Again, this ERP will help us do that. We're building in a lot of the bidders' applications, the bond waivers, that's sort of reporting into one system. Business certification. Right now, we have a self-certification that is being built into the new system so that when vendors go in, they will actually self-certify where they are. And then they also have the opportunity to put in their certifications numbers if they are SWAM certified. Subcontracting opportunities. We still work on those programs, as Lavera mentioned, but we're also working with our implementer to find a way to put some of those subcontracting data into the system so we can get more real-time data about how our, how our people are functioning, how our vendors are functioning with the subcontracting, and where we actually stand and identify a problem a little quicker should one arise so that we can take care of it while it's happening as opposed to after the fact. Contract goals. The study identified a need for individual contract goals. One of those is the city's bond waiver program, which we're still doing. Unbundling large contracts, which is an ongoing effort that will never go away. We've got to be conscious of that forever. And again, prompt payment is something that we have already implemented, but the new ERP system will help us enhance that even further. Okay. Any, do you want questions first, or you want to just jump right in?
No, I just think, I think we just want to talk about next steps. Is that we're implementing our ERP, and that is taking an inordinate amount of time and resources to make sure we have good internal controls, to make sure we have the system set up. We have the vendor self-service portal, which is going to be phenomenal. And we will have that open June 1st, and hopefully we will get as many small businesses, SWAM certified, minority businesses, women-owned businesses to pick their commodities. And we are doing, at the April-Spring event, we're going to do the same thing as we did as the Minority Business Expo and try to get people to sign up. We're doing that manually on a piece of paper, but we're going to electronically do that once the system's up and running. We're going to have so much better data to be able to really massage, you know, this waiting six months for some outside vendor to help us pull the numbers really does not, it doesn't speak to transparency as well as, it doesn't help us make movements that we need to make immediately. We also want to work with construction more, pursue more bond waivers and unbundle contracts, and then obviously work with council and the shelter bidding and the city attorneys. And we have completed quite a few things, and we think about this all the time, and we work on it. We have bi-weekly meetings just to discuss what can we do to improve. And happy to answer any questions or comments.
Thank you for your presentation. It's always good to see you. Do we have a dedicated SWAM office yet?
No, we don't. What we have is, we have, obviously, our Minority Business Council support team. We have Minority Business Coordinator Lavera. Keith Lee is in the room, as well as Nikita Sussins, that work in the Purchasing Department in the Finance Department. And so they work with purchasing. So they come to the staff meetings and purchasing. They know what procurement's going on. They also work very closely with economic development. And Taylor Adams is in the room if he wanted to speak. Jeff Smith is our, I don't, I don't want to mess up his title.
He's the Business Development Rep, too.
Okay. And so he obviously works together, and we all coordinate together.
I guess my second question is, why haven't we created a SWAM office? It seems like we have the personnel. They're a three-person operation that's within the purchasing division. Why haven't we created a dedicated SWAM office yet?
That's something we need to explore, and I do think that Taylor and I have spoken about, I'll let Taylor come up in.
Councilman, thank you for the, thank you for the question. And certainly, this is, Alex and I, Alice and I have had a couple of contextual conversations about how we can, how we can more closely sort of take the team that is currently within purchasing and the resources that I have and sort of push this issue forward. The key for us, going back to Councilmember Berluci's question, it's really about how do we, how do we create the best possible means of gaining access to both doing business in the city and doing business with the city? And understanding that there's an advocacy role that's involved in both of those. And so we don't mean to move slowly here. The idea, though, is we just want to make sure that, that we only, that basically that we only do this once.
Right.
And that we, that we get it right the first time.
Sure.
But we're on it, and thank you.
I guess my sentiments or my retort sort of will be to that. I mean, if we have a recommendation from the disparity study, we have the personnel already, then what else do we need in order to implement this? Because it seems like we have people doing the work.
Yes, sir.
So why, why can't we, why, what else do we need to create a dedicated SWAM office if we have all the tools that are there?
Well... I don't want to get ahead of the manager, but that is, but that is, that is, that is certainly something we could, we could look at quickly because you're, I don't think it's, to answer your question, I do not believe that it is a heavy resource ask because of the reasons you just mentioned. But if you, but, Mr. Leahy, if you don't mind, Alice and I could come back with a recommendation.
We can come back and talk about it some more and address it in the budget. It sounds like a number of the individuals, though, are out to different, different areas of finance and different areas of economic development, and we would be pulling them all the way, leaving holes in those departments.
Well, according to this, it seems like they're already concentrated on these SWAM programs, right?
Yes.
And so if they're already concentrated on this, it would seem like we'll be leaving holes if they're already concentrated on SWAM programs. And so I guess the next step would be for us to get this done. I mean, it seems though we have all the tools in place, and now we're trying to think about, well, let's talk about it more. No, we have the tools in place. We have the dedicated personnel to this. Let's create this office, and let's take the next step.
And so I think Taylor and I need to talk about the logistics of it, and I think that is probably the next step that we need to do, is talk about the logistics of it. Because there are some benefits for having the logistics, having staff in with the purchasing and seeing what's being procured in the city, as well as there's benefits to having people in the Economic Development Department seeing what's going on in the city. So there's some logistics to it. But other than that, I think it's, it's there. It's just a matter of how do we get the logistics done.
I think we can, we can sit down, we can discuss logistics while coming to the, you know, the urgency of getting this done. And I don't want, you know, and I'm speaking personally, but as a liaison, I don't want this to be the budget somehow to be held up or to hold up this process because we understand...
I think it's process. It's not the budget.
Okay, great. So I just, I'd like to see us get this done before we even go into the budget cycle. That's just mine.
Okay, John, then, Michael.
I don't disagree with anything Councilman Rouse had to say, except our focus should be on output, not on input. And if we are achieving the objectives that we want, and if we're not, and the business case is it requires dedication to achieve that, we should. We should all be asking ourselves, if we have processes in place that should be producing that output and they're not, do we understand why they're failing to perform and why the remedy is dedication? But I do concur with the fact that if the work's getting done, it should be able to be achieved with net no additional assets tied top line of the budget because out of 7,000 positions, of which 452 are vacant on any given payroll day, that we should be able to find those assets to take care of that without having to put a burden on the taxpayers.
Michael.
Thank you for the presentation and all the information that you've shared here and all the work you're doing and will continue to do. I just want to, just for the moment, just say that I agree with the sentiments of Council Member Rouse and, you know, count me as a supporter for expediting that process as much as is reasonable. But for the, but I have another question. We're talking today about, the title of your slide is "Awards and Expenditures to Minority, Women, and Service Disabled Veteran-Owned Businesses." How do you define minority?
Yeah, that's fine.
Two definitions in play here. One is Civil Rights Act of 1964. The second is defined by the Commonwealth of Virginia. What's that?
In the Procurement Act.
In the Procurement Act. Thank you.
Could you, for the purposes of just everyone, just, do you have that information off the top of your head, what those categories are exactly?
Okay. Here we go. Let me see if I can still run them. It'd be, so African-American, Native American, Asian or Pacific Islander, in this case, service-disabled veteran are added in. Lavera?
We have Pacific Islanders as one as well. And 51% of the company has to be owned by one of those individuals that are in that ethnicity. We're going to be clear.
And so when you said service and disabled veteran-owned business, is that a category created by the Commonwealth or the Civil Rights Act or is that one that was created by the city?
That did not create it by the Commonwealth.
That's, that's a Commonwealth designation, and it is spoken to specifically in the, in the Virginia Public Procurement Act.
Okay. Well, where I'm going with this, which you probably know, Taylor, because we've had discussions about this before. I think it's fair to say that there are some minorities who are excluded from this program, particularly those who are minorities on the basis of their sexual orientation or gender identity. And I wonder if there is anything that we could do as a community to, and this is a problem, because many of those, members of those communities have been underrepresented throughout history. And I don't think it's a stretch to say that the participants in our economy who are members of those communities are not represented in the analysis that's before us today. And I recognize that that's not a designation that comes from the Commonwealth or the Procurement Act, but I wonder if there's any steps that we could take here in Virginia Beach, since you noted the Minority Business Council is, has been a model for the Commonwealth, to be better in representing all people in our community.
So I can speak to that one if you want me to.
Go ahead, go ahead and speak to that.
So, so important to note, the Human Rights Commission nationally, we know, is actively working to have the LGBT community added to the, added as a protected class under the Act. But we don't have it today. What, what I can say, though, is, as you and I have discussed, there's, we know that there is an LGBTQ Chamber of Commerce now that allows for sort of self-certification and self-identification with, as, for a, for a business that operates in Virginia. We don't have a means of tracking that today. That's not historically been something that the Purchasing Office has looked at. However, I don't know that any of us are opposed to trying to pull that together. It would just, again, that we'd need to put a little process behind what that would look like and understand that it would not specifically track with the SWAM certification that exists in the Commonwealth today.
And quite frankly, we are looking at the self-certification for signing up vendors, and that could be something that we put that in that particular category.
That is, that is actually something that we did question as we were putting that in, and we made sure that we knew how to put that in. The question is, does the city want to do that? So it is possible, as people sign up for iSupplier, that they actually choose those categories. We are capable of putting that in today or whenever to add those as categories so they could be tracked, should they need to be. If that's a choice... If that's a choice the city wants to make.
And how would the city make such a choice?
So we would need some policy guidance from you all on that one. I don't mean to jump in in front of these ladies.
No, that's fine. It's a good question.
Legal guidance.
Well, you know, just as a matter of philosophy and as a matter of practice, I think that we talk about inclusive practices, we talk about welcoming everyone, we're talking about creating points of access. I certainly wouldn't think we would want to leave anyone out. And so if there's anything that we could do that would help to tell a more full story about who's participating in our economy and who has access to participate in our economy, I would certainly appreciate it. And if you could provide some information to me outside of the course of this meeting about what policies we would need to adopt in order to at least measure and track or provide people an opportunity to self-select, I would appreciate that. Okay, John?
I have one other question, but I do know there are a couple of issues proceeding the way to the Supreme Court trying to define legally what is the definition and application of the 13th and 14th Amendment relative to gender. Absent those determinations, we would have no legal basis, I'd leave it to the attorney, to have a preference program based upon that because it's not statutorily recognized. But there are cases trying to resolve that in progress in various circuit courts or the federal court system. But I want to ask a question about disabled veterans. We have a lot of disabled veterans in Hampton Roads, and I was surprised by the low number. So, and I'm not saying, because there's lots of reasons, but I'd just be curious as to what is our next step in terms of outreach to this community, which is a substantial part of Hampton Roads.
One of the key components with that designation is that it's a service-disabled veteran, which does limit that group much more than disabled veteran, which is often overlooked.
There's a lot of those in Hampton Roads.
There are.
One important thing to note about that designation as well is to remember that as that is a Commonwealth and not federal, and it's the hierarchy by which we report to avoid double counting. So generally, we would count minority first, women second, service-disabled third. So if someone is both a minority-owned and service-disabled veteran-owned business, we would only count the minority to avoid double counting. If they were woman-owned and service-disabled veteran-owned, then they would only be counted as a woman-owned business to avoid double counting. So it's important to note that is a much broader pool than is currently reported.
So I guess it would be helpful, just because we have a large veteran constituency in our community, that maybe in this report, there could be, I call it a sidebar or a footnote, because when you see this at first, and thank you for that explanation, is, makes people think, hey, wait a minute. Everybody probably personally knows a service-disabled veteran, I suspect, if not a number of them. And based upon our real estate exemptions list, there's quite a few of them in Virginia Beach. So I'm just, it would be nice to have that, just so it would give people a better understanding of what we're really doing. That would be helpful, and thank you so much for that amplification.
Okay, anybody else? Sabrina?
Can you tell me again, what's the percentage, the total, of the total expenditures for minority business-owned businesses for 2019?
Expenditures?
For minority? I'm looking for the percentage for minority-owned businesses.
For awards or expenditures? I'm sorry.
Total expenditures.
It's 4% of the total.
Because I'm looking here at a report from December 2018 that said the total expenditures were 6.5. So does that mean we've regressed back to 4%?
I think it's important to recognize that depending on what projects we have in the pipeline, I think the Lesnar Bridge was a large project. Expenditures can go up and down, so you have to look at the trends a little bit more. The other aspect of this, too, is our awards went up. So next year, we should see the expenditures go up. So just because it's awarded this year doesn't mean it gets paid this year.
We also had an event at the very end of the fiscal year, and so there was a lot of emergency spending where we were just grasping for the people that we could get to do the jobs that were on contracts and those sorts of things. So those were undertaken very quickly, as they needed to be, with those businesses that we had to work with. And so there was a significant expenditure there that was in the emergency category.
So the answer is yes.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, yes, John?
That's a good point, and I realize you can't answer all the questions. I appreciate that. I know I have a lot of questions. But there is a difference between you obligate money, the people perform the study, they've actually submitted their vouchers, and then you've validated the vouchers and you've paid them. So I don't know what the lag time is, but probably, you know, because of everyone's looking at numbers and, and I realize you have to consistently define it the same way over time, or there's no trend line you can make.
Right.
But I do appreciate the fact that some things, you get a big award, but dependent upon the nature of the work, the big spending might come at the end because they got paid for some planning, they got paid, but it might cross the fiscal years. But sometimes it might be helpful, and a voiceover and a couple of examples just to show that is to, hey, here's its obligation, but here's this carryover in effect. It's a carryover expenditure.
Sure.
And, well, not carryover yet, but it's a carryover money for the future expenditure that if you normalized it for all the contracts, it would look different.
And I think that's why we're doing things in types of procurement, the construction versus goods and services. Goods and services are usually that fiscal year. Construction takes a longer time.
And the reason that Lesnar Bridge has been mentioned a couple of times is very important. That's federally, that's federal DOT money that flowed through VDA. And so just to remind you all, when we're dealing with federal money, we're conforming to federal procurement guidelines, which give us a much, a much bigger stick in the world of project goals and a contractor's obligation to hit those goals, as opposed to when we're dealing with local money. So Lesnar Bridge completing and final payout there and not having a large DOT project right behind it was a, had a real impact.
Okay, Sabrina?
Just as, and I appreciate you for making, for clarifying that point. Hopefully, we can find a way to normalize, you know, that whole process, because what we're really looking at is percentages. And that's what the disparity study was based on, where we are in our percentages and where we lack. So we really need to normalize the process so we can see how we're doing in terms of reaching and addressing that disparity.
Yes. And be consistent in that. And thank you for that. We, with the new system and the capability of looking at those things and seeing everything in one system where we're not manually pulling and trying to compare, should help us a great deal in presenting you more detail and in more meaningful numbers.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Thank you all for your collaborative and forward-thinking work and looking forward to continued progress. Thank you all very much. To all people involved, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we're moving on to city council comments.
I have a couple of, I wrote mine down. Not today, but at a future date, I would like an update on the arena as it goes to the Supreme Court. I just would like to get an update on that. I know we've talked a lot about providing upfront budgetary guidance. Well, the clock is running out against us, and pretty soon it's going to be backward guidance. So if that is certainly still your intent, Mr. Mayor, we are offlane, as we would say in my line of work. I hope this is a discussion item so we can have a game plan. I know Mrs. Abbott's not, Councilmember Abbott's not here, but I know she brought forth this in December, but a district voting referendum discussion, I want to make sure that that doesn't not happen because of inaction, but a conscious decision on this body's part and to give the public a choice. I talked a little bit earlier about six-week family leave, and I realize that caused people to have some budgetary issues. Well, the federal government just operated, implemented 12-week family leave, and I can tell you, we've got no increased labor costs to make that happen, and we're going to implement that. We're going to make it work. I think the city is no less agile and resourceful than the federal government is, and so I think we should be pursuing, moving more aggressively on what we do with family leave, even if we only do six weeks. I would love 12, but we need to more aggressively get in line with where I think the national trend on that is. I think another area we haven't, hopefully with the treatment we'll talk about or the manager can, but we don't do enough. We do a lot with training and fire departments because of certification. There's lots of work that don't require certifications, quote unquote, to do the job, but we are under-investing in our workforce. I've talked about workforce development takes a backseat to other issues. We need to make sure we're looking outside the traditional areas about career development. So I think that's important. I do think if you look at some, we probably need to update our five-year forecast revenue projections. If you look at some of the latest statistics and things we're looking at there, it's probably a little conservative, so we need to make sure that maybe that additional growth in revenue over what we planned is not totally obligated in what you're recommending, but holding some stuff back for some council initiatives that we haven't yet discussed. I think that's something we should think about. And then, I talked about this a couple of times, and I don't know that we're actually doing anything about it, but we need to get this, we had some good articles in press on our model, and I've taken the time to sit down in the conference room there, and I spent three hours having them show me what the model can do, and that's why I'm frustrated that everybody hasn't seen what it can do. But I think we're not taking full advantage of how we use this model to help us speed along our review process with federal and state agencies. I just think we're not doing that, and with these new federal rules that are coming out, they'll be effective in about another 50 days. But we got to be using, I don't know how we get the people down here, we got to take some council members and go visit EPA or go visit the head regulator at OMB. I don't know where you have to go, but if you're looking for the middle management to be your advocate, probably not. They're a source of resistance in federal agencies. You usually have to go to the top. So I don't know, but he's trying to get on Secretary Chow's calendar, but she's the one that signed out those new rules. But I think we can be much more aggressive in trying to sell the science. We're not trying to short-circuit anything. We've invested lots of money in the model, millions in studies. We have plenty of studies and good work, but we need to have a higher return and a more productive response and get something by doing all that good work and moving our projects along faster. I think that, Mr. Mayor, I think that's doable. I'm happy to go on one of those trips, but I just think if we engaged our local senators and congress, I think that we, because it's just a science. We're not asking for special treatment. We're asking for compliance. But I think our model has given us more compliance than we're getting credit for.
You mean the flooding model?
I didn't know what model you were talking about.
Okay, the flooding model.
Okay.
Saying model.
And it's, and it said, and we bought new computers to make it work. It says it might be the best or second best. Well, that's worth something, and a return on investment ought to get people to recognize the science of it. And we can do our drainage basins end-to-end, and rather than permitting each individual project and paying that overhead over and over and over, why can't we get a, the model certified and do it drainage basin by drainage basin, and then we can do end-to-end construction? We have, we have got it. This serial idea is just never going to be fast enough for the threat, and I think we should, not demand is the right word, we should advocate more heavily than we are to get people to recognize the good work of our staff and our people and our model and the quality of the data and be able to move faster. And I'm happy to go wherever that is to help sell that story, Mr. Mayor and City Manager, but it's just compelling. And so those are some of the things that I covered, wanted to cover today and to share. And at my town halls, I had, well, one town hall so far, but I also addressed the Lynnhaven Colony Civic League. There is, there is support. They want more information, like I was telling you, but there is general support for dealing more aggressively. I talked about my 10-year double the money and 20-year plan, and I think the interest rates support that kind of an approach. I also asked them if they'd like to have their taxes raised to do away with the stormwater management fee, and that was almost unanimous, that people really think that that fee isn't the right approach to be financing flooding. I've never thought it was the right approach, and maybe that's a bigger question, but I'm having another town hall on tomorrow night at Bow Creek, and I have a preset thing, I thought 10 minutes and take questions, but I can tell you flooding's still at Lynnhaven. There are some other issues, too, but other places have been people's top concern. And the other issue I've mentioned here, I know you all got the report, we're carrying a vacancy rate of 452 positions every pay period. Some are even higher. If you do look at their latest financial report, on the high side it's 27.2. You've got to discount that for the attrition we took to help finance the stuff in our budget, you may recall. But we need to, and the police department, thank goodness, is up from being down about 100 to down to 60. That's the 60 was a good job on that part. But we need to look at that, and we need to be thinking about where does that one-time revenue go at the end of the year when it's $20, $25 million? You know, we ought to be having a discussion about that at our retreat and then also understand why that is, and in some cases, maybe we shouldn't be in those businesses if we're having such a hard time recruiting. I talked about that in terms of stormwater management, a different approach. But in public safety, we, 60 people down. I've been to a couple of these precinct things where people talk about, they get issues from, they always say, well, we have a manpower, we're dealing with a manpower shortfall. I mean, I've heard that term expressed. I'm sure I'm not the only council member who's heard that expression. And so what is our plan to, not to close the normal attrition gap, but there's a structural issue there? And I'm not pointing fingers anywhere. It's just, is that just what we need to accept because that's a structural issue we're always going to have? So if we want to have, well, we got to increase the top line of hiring? Or do we know that we always under-recruit, so we over-hire and balance it out? I'm just looking for solutions to get more officers on the street and take the stress off the officers on the street having to work overtime and all the things they do. How we take the stress off the force readiness? I'm really looking for some insight on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks. Actually, talking about a couple of your things. One, it would be really interesting to have the staff from the police training facility come down, because if you actually sit down and talk to them, one of their biggest challenges is keeping people in the academy despite the repeated warnings that, you know, this is the last days, nine to five, you're going to be working for a long time, and people still tend to resign throughout the academy and some even up till the last couple of weeks, which makes no sense. They've gone through all the hard stuff, so. And then talking about the family leave, it's interesting. So my daughter just had her baby last week in Belgium, and I do have photos if anybody wants them. But they, she does not go back to work until May, 100% paid. So it's a difference in 55% tax rate in here, too, so.
50% tax rate.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a, little bit of a wake-up call there. One thing I wanted to address, just so there's not any surprises as it moves forward, the Board of Building Code appeals, and I'm not talking about this in closed session because it's about process and not, not membership. I've worked with the city clerk's office and also the city attorney's office on that. It's essentially not functioning, as you all know. We're constantly having trouble getting, getting members on there and members staying on there, and there's other things that we could talk about in closed session regarding members. So we're going to be bringing forward a resolution, reformatting the board to come more in line with, with the way it's done in virtually every other locality in Virginia. And it's not really anybody's fault here. It was last updated in 1986 in Virginia Beach, so I'm just trying to bring it in line with that. But I didn't want to surprise anybody because it is something that, once, once city attorney's office has, has everything drafted, be going back with the city clerk's office to try to figure out where we can mesh things, and then, then we'll bring it, share it with everybody. Do you want to talk about legislative there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
We got to meet with our delegation up in Richmond the other day, and we had a good chat. It was congenial, congenial, and we're just trying to build some bridges. We obviously have some new leadership up there, but, you know, we're going to try to work collaboratively with everybody. And, you know, we're going to, you know, try to, you know, get what we can for, you know, the city of Virginia Beach.
Thank you for going up there, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor.
You know, we're going to be building these bridges year-round with everyone. Anybody else? Yeah, Tom?
I'd like to, again, request that the signup sheet keep moving around.
With the last person who needs to do it, with Ms. Abbott, Ms. Wilson, we're not here.
Okay. And then I've sent a couple of letters on the retreat. The last one I sent was Friday. Unless there is a strong preference to the contrary, it looks like the convention center is shaping up as the best location, simply because our retreat, unless, again, there's a strong preference for dates other than the 24th and 25th of February, needs to be, we need to work with the school system on their official for a day. And they start out early in the morning on that, on the 25th with a breakfast, and so if the retreat and the function are at the same location, it works quite well. In fact, the school system was quite excited that a number of their students would actually get to view the retreat, so.
I think that'd be good.
Next question, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I have a conflict on the 24th, and I cannot resolve that. I said that early on.
Okay, yeah, Michael?
Well, I'd just like to share, just for, I just want to make a broad invitation. I'm hosting a community conversation on February 6th at the Bow Creek Recreation Center, and we'll be discussing... we'll be discussing several topics such as the next fiscal year budget, stormwater maintenance and operations of flood control projects, city manager search, public safety, some other key priorities, and I always like to invite anyone who would like to attend and offer feedback for the Rose Hall District, or really any other suggestions or ideas they have throughout the city to join us that evening at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Council comments now, where you will do the agenda review.
Okay, under ordinances and resolutions, we have a speaker for all five items, but that'll be handled before, before the consent agenda.
I do want to withdraw item four, I want that to be voted on separately and discussed separately.
Okay, so are you aware that they, four, A and B, that they have, and there's, there's this document here that everybody should see from the commissioner, they have requested a deferral to February 4th because they're going to bring more information forward?
I haven't read that yet.
Sorry, but I haven't read it. Are you okay with that one?
Defer, yes.
Okay.
Can I, can I, on those, can I point out that it takes nine votes to grant that, and so you've only got nine members here today, so.
I think we should defer them all to the, to, that's the best answer.
You may wish, you may wish to defer them all just so that.
I don't want to deny anyone the chance to have their thing approved, I would never do that.
Okay, so we'll say defer that till February 4th.
Till all of four?
Four, A, B, and C. All right, any other comments on items one, two, three, or five? Okay, under planning, Ocean Rental Properties LLC. By the way, I spoke with Ms. Abbott, the three items in her district, she is okay with, just so y'all are aware of that, she, I asked her if she wanted us to defer them because she's ill, and she, she told me she was okay with them going forward if we were. Item one, Ocean Rental Properties LLC subdivision variance, access to a public street lot with 5560 Shell Road, District 2, Kempsville, is everybody okay with that?
No issues.
If I could ask a question. It talks about creating a private maintenance for that road intersection. How does that work? I mean, is it a private maintenance agreement with everybody who owns those houses, and every time a house sells, it has to be redone, or it's not a homeowners association?
So that would be, currently, there's one owner of all the properties, so they would essentially say that each of the, each of the property owners would be responsible for maintaining that portion that they're widening in front of their properties.
So it's a long-term maintenance, though, so anybody who buys those houses, they are, they're in for it, they better, I mean, so every time a house sells, they have to redo the maintenance agreement?
Believe it will run with the land according to that, so I don't believe there needs to be an additional document, but I can defer to the city attorney for that one.
So what it means, if I can pick up on this, that means, so if it needs maintenance, and then the ownership changes, they obviously have that obligation, but they're not posting any bond or any assurances on the event, who assesses that it needs to be maintained? Because, no, I know a guy in my neighborhood had to put in a certain kind of asphalt driveway because of, so a fire truck could get nine tenths off the road, and they were very specific on the underlaying, the thickness of the asphalt, so a truck could get back in there. So I assume they're going to be living with that same kind of requirement. So does that mean that, that the fire department goes and says, hey, this roadbed no longer supports a fire truck, and it has to be paved, and we issued them a notice to maintain it to meet that standard, and they don't act, does that mean that we then do it ourselves and put a lien on the property?
Um.
I'm actually about the mechanics, I'm not assuming the best, I always assume the worst happens, and how is the worst-case handled? Because the best case is easy. The worst case is what I want to know.
To me, it would be considered a violation of their subdivision variance for the maintenance, so it would be a zone, it would end up being a zoning violation, or they would be required to maintain it. So just looking at it in that, in that aspect. Now, the reason they're either able to build these three lots, and they'll have to, is because they can expand that roadway to meet that requirement to get the fire marshals to sign up on.
There's no doubt the first road goes in, because everybody wants it. I'm talking about the road is in, time is never your friend going with asphalt, it dries out, all that kind of stuff, it fails, just like our roads fail, and now, fire department comes by there when they drive around and say, hey, this, I no longer can safely take my fire truck or my ambulance back to that property. We tell the people, you need to pave this road. Who gives them that notice? And if they don't do it, it's like you don't do your yard, they come in, the city comes and cleans it up and puts a lien on your property, is that the same process? That's all I'm asking.
We will look into it, but I don't believe, it would be handled, and from the way I've reviewed, this issue would be handled through a, through a violation notice, and they would be forced to, to correct accordingly, not instead of the city coming in and doing it. But we will, we'll review it, we'll get more information.
All right, is everybody okay then with putting that one on consent?
I've got one more question. And, and this is cropping up, just in what we're looking at in reviewing these short-term rental applications. In this particular application, we're going to be creating three lots. Two of them are going to be 5,000 square foot lots, very small lots, very small widths. I, I think the agreement here is that Lot A would not be further subdivided, because I guess Lots B and C wouldn't be able to anyway. But we almost need, these very small lots need to agree that they won't ever apply for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental. Can you imagine what one would do to that neighborhood? When we're, I see we're continuously creating smaller lots, and that, I think we're doing, we're thinking of affordable housing and so forth. But once we get talking about these short-term rental things, we're creating a future mess. That's just my comment.
Well, you're spot-on, because in LA, when they went to accessory use versus dividing up lots and allowed up, I think, a 900 square foot facility, generated very little affordable housing, just generated additional short-term rentals. And, and so I think your observation in terms of what actually happens in reality is spot-on, and we said from the beginning, when this conditional use thing came along, that this was going to be like crabgrass. Once the first thing gets rooted, you're never going to be able to turn one down.
So everybody's okay with this on consent then on this one?
Reluctantly.
Yeah. Hamilton, U-Bank, street closure, 2176 square feet, portion of an unimproved right-of-way 770 Woodstock Road in Kempsville. Everybody okay with that one?
No, I'm going to vote no on three, now that I think about it more.
Three or two?
The one that was the, creating the three lots.
That's one.
Okay.
That's one.
What's, I'm sorry, I was looking down.
But that, that's going to be a no on number one for you?
Yes.
Make me also.
I'm just, the more I think about it, I'm just. Okay, under number two, is everybody okay with that one? Okay, items three, four, and five have a speaker. Item six, Kim Smith, 1440 LLC, regarding a tattoo parlor, 1440 North Great Neck Road, Lynnhaven District, I'm okay with, does anybody have a problem with it? Okay, next one, no, no redine, who's, who's knee, Newtown Thurton LLC, for conditional use permit for automotive repair garage, Thurston Avenue and Bayside District.
Fine. Go back, did you say three, four, and five have speakers?
Three, four, and five, and 10, 11, 12, 13 have speakers.
I'm not surprised on that.
14 does? And 14, so same one speaker for all of these. Number eight, Christopher J. Ocampo, Mary Holden, Automotive Repair Garage at 2505 Horse Pasture Road in the Rose Hall District.
I've heard no opposition.
Greg McMcKinnon, Mills Collins LLC, for conditional use permit regarding bulk storage, 4145 Virginia Beach Boulevard, that's in my district. I am not in favor of it, but I wanted to hear, so I'll tell, since we have a little bit of time.
Which one is that?
That's the one we've got emailed on and stuff on, yes.
Number nine, I met with, last week I met with the folks from that condo association, and they, they said that they were on the property, they had some photos, they were kicked off the property by the owner. I mentioned that to Planning Director, who's here today, and if you could just give me an up, give everybody an update on the condition of the property.
Yes, sir. So we went to the property this morning to see if the applicant has moved forward with trying to clean up his site. He did have, for, just to kind of give a little quick summary, there is a landscaping business that is operating at the location that did not know they could, they could use it as a bulk storage yard. We cited them once we found out about it. He is storing his equipment that deals with his landscape business, but as we went to the site today, we found tires and other things that were on the location as well. It seemed to have, from the pictures that we received prior to the planning commission, it seems that the site has gotten more organized, but more stuffed. So it's, things are grouped in areas, but it is, it does look a bit messier, so it's, well, we were, we went onto the site, we took, we, we did go on and take a look at it. It was kind of haphazard where he had the lumber stored and other things like that, but now he has, like I said, he has tires and other things based on the photos that I saw today, which is of concern for the, for planning.
Okay, well, I think we're going to have to hear that one.
Which one is that, nine?
Nine. So we'll be hearing three, four, and five, nine through 14.
That it?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So, so other than, other than the ones that we've pulled, or that I just pulled, there's one speaker for all of these items, so.
Didn't Ms. Abbott speak to you about, didn't Ms. Abbott's comment that you referred to apply to 14 as well? Okay, just want to get a confirmation, thank you very much.
You would note also that there were revised, two revised ARFs for two of those that just corrected a mathematical error on the number of persons permitted based on the number of bedrooms. That's for number, I believe, 10 and number 13, is that right?
And, and. Yes, please. May I ask, do you not have anybody but the one speaker on item 12?
Yes, just one speaker on all of them. There are still people who will come.
Yes.
Yeah.
Especially on 10 through 13.
Okay, Guy?
Are these the first short-term rental?
Yep, the EPs we've had, we didn't do any that we got was gone, right?
We wanted to have your sage advice. Well, I do have questions, but I'm going to save it for the discussions, if we're going to hear them out there.
We thought you would appreciate that.
Thanks.
Yeah, most of them, but that's okay. All right, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion of recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia is mended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussions or, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section Kempsville District, Beach District. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotions, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2371A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, a motion and then a second, roll call.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Finley.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Senator Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Burleschi.
Aye.
Mr. Tower.
Aye.
Ms. Wooten.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
Okay, let's take a short break.